Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, May 4th, 2020 to order in its electronic fashion. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Charlie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Item two, public forum. Is there anyone on the meeting from the public that wishes to address the board? Raise your hand by electronics or? Nope, none? We'll move on to item three, and that's to approve the minutes, and those will be the April 20th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
No, moved.
And a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, changes, additions, et cetera? I had none.
No, it's fine.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also aye. Motion passes. Item four. Fire Chief Charlie Herschel, 4.1, discuss and take possible action on the purchase of HVAC for the IT server room. Charlie, floor is yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The HVAC system for our IT room downstairs is rapidly failing. It became an emergency situation. We don't want to lose $100,000 worth of equipment over that. So I'm asking to replace it for the price of $16,714 from environmental engineering that are lowers of the three quotes that we received that met all the requirements.
Great. And Charlie, this runs all our critical systems, including our emergency management operations, et cetera?
Absolutely. We don't want to lose that right now.
No, we don't. No, we don't. Any questions or comments? None? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the HVAC in the amount of $16,714 to Environmental Engineering, Inc.?
So moved.
Moved Sandy and Lou on the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Charlie, and just one other piece of news. I want to thank all of our emergency service, first responders and service folk on the work that they've been doing through this crisis, and it includes both fire and police. I know Jeff is on as well. But more recently, with the mask giveaway to the residents of the town, only two-thirds of our order had showed up on time, and Charlie was gracious enough to lend us the balance of the order for a couple of days so that we could meet the Tuesday distribution. So thank you very much for your willingness to work with us and help provide the residents with those masks, Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Good. Item five, Police Chief Jeff Hutchinson, 5.1, consider and take possible action on the purchase of police tablet replacements. Jeff, your floor is yours. Maybe it's not. Jeff, can you? We can't hear you.
He's there, but nothing like just his name is showing up.
Just his name is showing up. Okay.
I don't have this. I sent it in an email. It was a.
Oh, yes, you did. You did.
I didn't make it to board pack. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. Sorry.
Yeah, he's showing up, Matt, but I see no microphone and no video for him.
Okay.
Tracy, did you send that to everybody or just the board?
I think I just sent it to the board.
You want to send it out to a few other folks if you can?
Yeah, I will. You can actually put it up. I'll put it on board pack right now.
It has monetary.
Yep.
Monetary request.
You're going to put it on board pack, too?
Yep, I'll put it right now.
Do we have to refresh our board pack screen and go out and back in, or should it refresh automatically?
No, you'd have to go back out and in again.
Tracy, let us know when you're ready for us to go out and in again.
Back, yeah.
Yeah, I will.
All right, I apologize for that. I don't know if it was me or not, but essentially, our item is we're looking to replace two tablets that are used in the cruisers. We've implemented a change in the tablets we're using to more ruggedized systems that are going to last us through more vehicles. That's why the expense on them, we have this budgeted. The item's over 7,500, so it's on your table. This is a purpose-built, specific item that our new IT direct, Public Safety IT person helped us with. So we're looking for approval of 8,46213 to purchase two new tablets for the two cruisers we're expecting whenever they get here.
Okay. Perfect. Anybody have any questions?
How many of these things are in place already and how many are we likely to need over the next few years?
We have, we have one. Right now, we have tablets in every vehicle, but we have one of this type in the car we just replaced, and it's working out perfectly. So we're getting, so our expectation is every time we get new cruisers, we're going to be replacing the tablets within, in each cruiser like we would any other equipment, and our expectation is that these are going to last well beyond. We're getting just regular Dell tablets right now that are getting beat up. They get used 24/7. There's things getting plugged in and pulled out, and the components aren't set up to last or be used that way. So right now, we have one. These are the next two, and we would be replacing as necessary moving forward.
So they're likely to outlast even the life of the cruiser?
That's what our expectation is, yes.
Okay, because it seems like a lot, but if you're getting multiple uses out of it.
And so all the, all the parts you see on the requisition don't get replaced each time. So the dock, it's usually just the tablet that's going to get replaced, but all the systems that go with it, you know, the keyboards, the dock, that stuff is going to carry over to the next tablet itself. Component, tablet component.
Jeff?
Yes.
This is Charles. It seemed like you were indicating that there's a possible delay on the cruisers. Is that?
No, it's not possible. It's actual. Yeah, we're having, and these are the two cruisers that we had ordered in this 2020 budget. We're lucky that we got that other one, but you know, they had told us one was released and supposed to be delivered by April. We haven't gotten it yet, and these are the problems you're seeing around the country, and that's it's not unique to Guilford. It's not unique to the supplier.
It's a manufacturing issue?
Absolutely, manufacturing, yes.
Are they giving you any indication of reality?
Well, reality is one was allegedly built and sent. We're waiting for it. The other one, we're waiting until probably at least the fall.
Wow.
Yeah.
And you're going to be all right with that, though?
Well, right now, we're in decent shape. If we can get this, the one car that's been allegedly built and released will be in a lot better shape. But the more, the farther we go, you know, the impact is more long-term, because as we wait, we're going to be, if all the cars come in from '20 and then '21 towards the same time, we start getting cars on the same cycle, which we'd rather not do. We like to stagger the replacements so we don't have to replace a whole bunch all at once. But we're hopeful that, you know, sooner rather than later, and we have no control over it. But we're trying to get all the components in place before then. If they don't come in for longer than we expect, we'd end up putting these tablets in an existing car.
Wow. Yeah, then, okay. All right.
I will, I will say one thing, just as an aside, and it has nothing to do with this item. The one cruiser we had to buy in an emergency after the other one got totaled by an alleged drunk driver, we ended up purchasing an available hybrid vehicle that, you know, we were going to wait to see how things worked out. I can tell you in the couple of months that we've had it, our fuel mileage has gone from about 14 miles per gallon to 21. So that's a huge, huge impact. We weren't sure how it was going to work out, but we're already seeing, well, we expect to be good returns on that.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Anything further? No, nothing? Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the two tablets in the amount of $8,462.13 to patrol PC?
No, moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Item six, discussion of proposed bonding for fiscal year 2021. This is really just to give you an update based on the governor's executive order. Seven S, Section 7, which some may recall was the subject of some discussion with the Board of Finance over the last couple of weeks. We have determined that the Board of Finance could, in fact, as well as the Board of Selectmen, there's a caveat here, the Board of Finance could approve if they deem the project or projects to meet the requirements as laid out in the executive order, which talk about immediacy, financial loss, public safety, public health. So the Board of Finance will be working with the Board of Education to determine which, if any, of those projects that are in the bonding package for the Board of Education to potentially move to adoption based on the authority granted to them by the executive order. The Board of Selectmen would also have to weigh in and approve by majority vote on that, which, which turns out to be a pretty interesting phenomenon, because typically Boards of Selectmen have no have no authority over Boards of Education budgeting in any way, shape, or form. But I think this was, that was put in as a failsafe or protection against, you know, some, some political machinations in the background. So just to give you, that's a heads up. So it is in the Board of Finance's hands right now, because they are the authority that would move bonding out to, typically out to the public, and in this case would be the start of that process, which would include the Board of Selectmen after the Board of Finance has taken action. Pam, did I miss anything on that?
No, I think you covered it. You know, just have to be very careful to meet the burden, the threshold that Matt set out, you know, the immediacy need and to prevent significant financial loss or for the, necessary for the protection of persons and property within town. So, you know, both bodies should deliberate about that threshold to create an accurate record.
Pam?
That's it.
Pam?
Yes.
This is Charles. The question I had was, and I'm not sure of it, so you'll probably be able to tell me, is if this moves forward, and I am supportive of moving forward with the Lakes Project, but I did note that it said that anything else in that bonding also had to meet all of those thresholds. Question maybe is, is for Mary Jane, not you. Is there anything else in this particular bonding issue other than Lakes HVAC? And if there is, is that accurate that we have to meet the requirements for everything?
I'll just speak to my area, which is it is accurate that any element within that bonding package must meet that threshold. And I'll let MJ speak us to what is in the bond package.
There are three, three items proposed, Phase 2 of Baldwin HVAC, the Lakes HVAC upgrades, and Lakes windows and door upgrades.
In a conversation that I had at the end of last week, I believe it was Friday, with Chairman Ailes on the Board of Finance, he indicated that in preliminary discussions with the superintendent and facilities director Cliff Kernham that the Baldwin Phase 2 project is the one that they believe will most likely meet the criteria in terms of what they have set out for priorities. And the fact that they're in the middle of a project that needs to be completed before, before the next school year starts, there is some concern about the ability to continually provide the HVAC handling, the air handling, both for, particularly for heat. So that, that would be the one I think that they're focused on at this point. I think they've already indicated that the others, the others may not necessarily meet the threshold.
Wow. So that means Lakes might not meet the threshold, because I thought that was, because we're spending so much on repairs, I thought that was, you know, a big issue also at this point.
Yeah, it's, it is still. It's still an imperative for them to get it done. The question is, can they limp along? Based on what they've invested over the past year, there is probably still expectation that pieces and parts are going to fail, and they'll continue to invest in it. But the question there is, what is significant? You know, we're talking $50,000 or $100,000. Does that meet the threshold? But again, those conversations will be taking place between the Board of Finance and the Board of Education and the superintendent. I expect that, I expect that that will be added to their agenda for Thursday. For those who don't know, the Board of Finance is meeting on Thursday to set the mill rate, and it's my anticipation. I don't know whether Tracy's done it yet or not, but that Mike is going to add that to the agenda.
When they spelled out the thresholds, well, like you said, the Board of Finance is going to get into it more, but when they listed the different thresholds that it had to meet, did it have to meet each threshold? Or did it have to meet one of them, such as the financial aspect in regards to the Lakes project?
Charles, I'm going to read actually from it, and there's, there's more than one element that you have to meet. "There is a need to act immediately and during the duration of the public health and civil preparedness emergency." So you need to act immediately. "In order to avoid endangering public health and welfare, prevent significant financial loss, or that action is otherwise necessary for the protection of persons and property within the municipality." So, you know, one thing to bear in mind is if you can't reach the immediacy threshold, this would be something that could be addressed, you know, a few months from now, if need be. But yeah, there's.
All right. Well, they'll sort it out in Board of Finance, in the legalese of it all. It just seems to me when they, they interject commas in the word or versus and that there might be some leeway, but this is for the Board of Finance to hash out, so, okay.
But I also want to point out that the way the, the executive order is worded, it's really, it's not just that the Board of Selectmen takes a recommendation from the Board of Finance. You know, arguably, both boards ought to review those, that threshold and make their own determination.
I understand. I just.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions or comments on that? So I suspect that we should all be available for Thursday night's meeting so that we can hear the Board of Education's position on this. And I, you know, I think there is, I know there is a level of criticality, at least in the eyes of the Board of Education, in terms of the timing, so that this work can be done over the summer, the period over the summertime, and lining contractors up for that. So I think that's why you'll probably see it move to the, to the front of the Board of Finance's agenda and something they'll need to do relatively quickly.
All right, so you don't need any motion from us at this point?
Nope, not at all. Not at all. All right. Thank you. Item seven, appointments and resignations, 7.1, act on a resignation received from Kathy Preventer from the Golf Course Commission. I'll make the motion with regret and appreciation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Call the question. All in favor, no, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Item eight, committee reports. Sandy?
Yes, the project, the affordable housing project, the Woodruff project is moving along. The architects on the job, Patrick Quinn, did have a good meeting with the Historic District Commission in April, and Karen Patrickin reported out that they got some very good suggestions from the commission, and things seem to be positive from both sides of that. And the other, they did put in the paperwork for DOH funding from the state. They got it in, you know, when that, hopefully, some funding will be forthcoming. And then I know that, and you, Matt, may be more, have more details on this than I do. I know that we are trying to work out the three, the subdivision of the three pieces of the property.
Yes, Sandy, I'll take that for a moment. I did talk with Tom Maris, the principal at Neighbor Works, Neighborhood, Neighbor Works New Horizons. And I've also had some conversations with George. In order to facilitate the arrangement we have with them, we need to create a subdivision, because we're carving off portions of a lot. So the town is going to move forward with the surveys required to do so with the anticipation that Neighbor Works New Horizons will be able to include those costs in their applications for grants and funding. So the, we're awaiting confirmation of that, but it is our understanding that that is, in fact, an opportunity. So we'd be able to reclaim some of the costs associated with those over the long run. The second piece I just want to talk about, and this may be redundant, may have said this earlier, but I've gotten feedback from the Guilford Center for Children, the daycare facility that's adjacent, on the adjacent portion of that, that land. And they are thrilled with the revisions that were made by Patrickin Architects and the, and the project in general. There are now only four buildings as opposed to five. The buffer between the last building and their facility is much larger. They have indicated a willingness to help with some of the draining problems as they move, move forward. So I think in large measure, the hurdle and also the parking issue has been satisfactorily addressed, at least to the board members' satisfaction. So I think that concern is now off the table.
And just to mention, when we help with the drainage, the drainage problem that the Guilford Center for Children has experienced is not related to this project, but because they're going to be experts on site, going to try to help them with that, just so we know it's not a cause of the project, that's all.
Sandy?
Yes.
At the, I guess it was a public hearing or whatever it was, the only other group, or not the only other. Another group that spoke up were the condo association down the street there.
Yes.
I know last time you said that there were some sidewalks included now. Have they been contacted? Are they under control and everything at this point?
I have not heard from anyone at Rollwood, but I haven't reached out and discussed the sidewalks with them. As far as I know, from the last plan that I saw, there will be a sidewalk on the south side of Stonehouse Lane going from the corner of Old Whitfield up to the end of the town property, which just goes beyond the GCC to where the creek comes in, Sluse Creek.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you did last time. I just wondered if they had any other concerns. I just remember them being the other group that was speaking at the public hearing, and I just want to make sure that they've been contacted and they know what's going on and address any of their concerns.
I'll follow up on that.
Right. I think there is, there is also a possibility that that sidewalk is going to get extended all the way down to Rollwood's first entrance, the Rollwood condominium complex.
Yes, but not by Neighbor Works, right?
Potentially. Potentially to Neighbor Works, potentially Neighbor Works or the Guilford Safe Streets Mobility Task Force, which has funding that could accomplish that as well.
I mean, that's not, it's not a negative thing to extend it. I didn't know how.
Absolutely not.
I just wanted to mention that Guilford, town of Guilford continues to be recognized in the affordable housing initiatives as a, that, that we, the town, are doing a good job with this. And next week, Mary Jo Kessner, Liza Petra, and myself will be participating in a conference about how this town has gone about developing affordable housing. And it's through, I believe, Partnership for Strong Communities.
Great. All right. Anything else, Lou? Nothing on, anything on yours?
Yeah, that's been quiet. I think everybody's going to really have to get back to Town Hall South, and we'll pick it up when things start to get back to normal.
Good. Correspondents, anybody have anything on the correspondence? Old business? New business? We have an item to add to the agenda. We're going to call it 11.1. Now, just consider and take possible action to contract with Weston Sampson for MS4 stormwater sampling. Is there a motion?
I'll move that to the agenda.
And a second?
I'll second that.
So all in favor, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haverta?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you. Janice, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you. So in your packet, you may have seen, we're looking to spend $14,000 out of my contracted services account. Originally, it was budgeted for 10, but we do have some extra money in that account for this year that I don't have allocated for anything else at this time, so I wanted to get a head, head start and jump on the stormwater testing that's required by our MS4 permit. We reached out to three firms to get proposals. First, we did look at, there's a consortium bid at the CROG level, but it didn't really meet the proper testing criteria that we needed. So after looking at that, we went out to three consultants to get pricing, and the lowest response is with Weston Sampson overall. Their dry weather testing was a little higher than Anchor was the low, but overall, with the three, four types of testing we need to have done, they, they would be the overall lowest.
Great. Just as a point of reference, this is the MS4 stormwater runoff reports at the state DEP. Legislature obviously have authorized them to require municipalities. You want to talk about your classic unfunded mandates? You wanna talk about your classic unfunded mandates, this clearly is one of those. However, being a shoreline community, stormwater runoff is, is something that should be of great concern to us to protect the, the shore and Long Island Sound. But nonetheless, this, this is one of those classic unfunded mandates. Any other comments or questions for Janice? No? Janice, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the expenditure of $14,000 to Weston and Sampson Engineering, Inc. for providing the sampling for our MS4 permit?
I will move it, but I just wanted to make sure that you've let our representatives know about the unfunded mandate prerogative of the state at this point.
Charles, I will be happy to do so, and I've already had conversations with them about this. This has been in place for a couple of years now.
I mean, I completely agree with you about, you know, it's the responsible thing to do, but, you know, may, maybe, you know what I'm talking about.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. Gotta remind them. So is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy. Any further discussion? If not, call the questions. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also aye. Motion carries. Janice, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. Okay. Public forum? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, and I'm gonna invite Mitch Goldblatt, Chris Hodgson, Ken Wilson. I think that's it, right? Okay. So would all of the, the balance of you please leave the meeting or disconnect? Because I wouldn't want Tracy to have to do it on your behalf.
Bye, y'all.
She's there. There she is.
She got my pick note, hopefully. Okay. Tracy, you ready? Recording? Thank you. In executive session, the Board considered a successor agreement between the town of Guilford and the Guilford Firefighters IAFF Local 4177 for July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. And during that discussion, we, we discussed the fact that the negotiating teams, respective negotiating teams, over the past four months have come to the agreement that an extension would be the most appropriate course of action at this point. And we have agreed, after some haggling, that a wage treatment of 2.25% for that fiscal year would be appropriate. So is there a motion to approve the successor agreement between the town of Guilford and the Guilford Firefighters International Association of Firefighters? Is there a motion for?
I would like to make that motion, but I do want to just add one caveat, which I don't know if it has to be part of the motion, but we're basing any decisions like this on the, the hope that we are gonna come out of this pandemic in a manageable way as a community. If, if things do not come out that way, I think all of the bargaining units have to understand that, that there may have to be extraordinary measures. So I don't want any agreement, because I do support this agreement completely, but if things change and we don't move forward in a manageable way that we all hope, then we're going to have to just have that discussion at a future date.
Great, good point, Charles. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll call the question. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Motion carries. Alright, well, I think that concludes our business for today's Board of Selectmen meeting. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Second. Call the question. All in favor, this is an aye vote. Aye.
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 Thank you all, and have a great day.
Be well. See you.